Good morning. I want to call the meeting to order. My apologies for us being late. Commissioner Mizell, you have the invocation and pledge this morning?
Thank you. I'd like to do something just a little different for the invocation. So I think some of you all know I was a history teacher and so I do love my history. And so on September 5th, 1774, which was 250 years ago today, the first Continental Congress had been convened in Philadelphia. And they began opening with a prayer on September 7th of that year. So I've just taken a couple excerpts from the prayer because it's rather long. And so I'll read that as the invocation. Feel free to join me if you'd like. "King of kings and Lord of lords, look down in mercy. We beseech thee on these our American states. Take them under thy nurturing care and give them wisdom in counsel. Be thou present, O God of wisdom, and direct the councils of this honorable assembly. Enable them to settle things on the best and surest foundation. Amen."
Amen.
If you'll stand, we'll say pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its cause.
On a recognition, do we have any veterans with us this morning? Any veterans at all? Do we have any veterans?
There we go.
Thank you. Do you have a pen, sir?
I do, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much for your service. At this point, I would ask for a motion to excuse Chair Yates. He is unable to attend the meeting this morning. Casey, do we have any word on?
I know Commissioner Elliott's not going to be here and I have not heard from Commissioner McClure. I can call him real quick and step out. I don't think he's going to be here because he may have some medical issues.
At this time, I'd like a motion to excuse Chair Yates and Commissioner Elliott and we will find out about Commissioner McClure.
Motion to excuse.
Have a motion?
Second.
And have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You want this on the clicker or is it?
Or verbally.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. If you have not registered for public address, would you please do that at this time? There is, I have asked for a discussion regarding Davidson County schools to be added to the agenda. Debbie has added that it would be Agenda 7F. Mr. Manus has requested that completing access to broadband CAB funding opportunity be added, which would be Agenda 7G. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion and a second to adopt the amended agenda?
Motion to adopt the amended agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda by Commissioner Watford. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Mizell. Please cast your vote on the tablets. Thank you, sir.
All of the votes are in. And that carries by motion of five.
Did you get anything, Casey, or?
Yeah, he's not going to be here.
Okay. Going a little out of what?
Make motion to excuse Commissioner McClure?
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So Commissioner McClure is excused as well. All right. Under public address, Ms. Dawn Hash?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Good morning. Acts 18, verses 9 and 10. "Then spake the Lord to Paul in the night by a vision: Be not afraid, but speak and hold not thy peace; for I am with thee, and no man shall set on thee to hurt thee, for I have much people in this city." I am here to give you a warning. A couple years ago, the Lord showed me something so vivid, I'm going to give you that warning because I think we need it. It needs to be released right now. He sent me in Lexington and the place was burning, burning, burning. The city was gone. Now, is it metaphoric? I don't know. But as this big equipment started moving, I said, "I'm looking for Lexington, North Carolina." And he gets on his little track and you could hear it beep, beep, and he gets out and he said, "Ma'am, you're in Lexington." And I said, "No, I'm not. I just live right down the road." You could hear the screaming. You could smell death and you could see the smoke. And he said, "Ma'am, I don't know where you've been. And you don't know what happened, but this is Lexington, North Carolina." And I could hear the screams. It was decimated. Is it metaphoric? I don't know. And I kept saying, "But I have a meeting I got to go to." And all of a sudden, a door opened from nowhere and a bright light shone out and a hand reached out and grabbed me and pulled me in and the door shut. I'm giving you this warning right now. It's a metaphor. I don't know. I don't know the time of the day, but God is warning you. You better do what is righteous before God because His name is on this building and this is the county government. Everything to do with the county and the government sits in Lexington. Everything about this better be cleaned up. We have children that need you to do due diligence. We have families that are being hurt and investigated because we're speaking up. I will not be silent because the Lord put it on my heart as I was driving in and I'm saying, "Please, don't make me say this." Did you see it? Yes, I did. Were you there? Yes, I was. Then it's the truth. You've been warned.
Thank you, Ms. Hash. I hope I'm saying this right. Quinay Willie? I don't know if I said it right or not.
Dr. Williams, and I marked him off because he's actually got an item on.
Okay. I got you.
Thank you.
Items for deliberation, discussion on potential public defender's office. Mr. Smith will lead this off.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Ms. Mary Pollard's here with us today from the administrative office of courts. We had a conversation, remember, a couple meetings ago, maybe it was the last regular meeting, about the public defender space that may be needed up at the courthouse with the state providing more folks. So I've asked her to come and give you guys a kind of a brief overview of what the state's looking at in terms of that staffing and then we can go back to the space issue after that. So Ms. Pollard, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much and thank you for inviting me to speak with you today. My name is Mary Pollard and I'm here from Raleigh today. I'm the executive director of the Office of Indigent Defense Services. We call it IDS. And IDS is a state agency. It's part of the judicial branch. It's governed by a 13-member commission mostly made up of lawyers from all over the state who were appointed by people like the chief justice and the speaker of the state house and the Senate pro temp and the state bar. And my agency is charged with the oversight of public defense in North Carolina. We do that in two ways. We provide lawyers to people who are entitled to representation through private assigned counsel, court-appointed counsel, and in some districts through the combination of public defender offices and private assigned counsel. So I'm going to give you a little bit of background on what we do and then we can talk about Davidson County and what makes sense for the future here. Let's see if I can. Yes, okay. So public defense is, who is served by public defense? It's people who have a constitutional or statutory right to a lawyer but who can't afford to hire a lawyer. And I think all of us have seen on TV or in the movies, somebody gets arrested and they get their Miranda warnings and they're told, you know, you don't have to say anything. You're entitled to a lawyer. If you can't afford a lawyer, one will be appointed for you. Well, that's a large part of public defense is providing counsel for criminal defendants who can't afford to hire a lawyer. But it's much more than that. There's a number of types of cases where you're entitled to a lawyer either as a matter of your constitutional rights under the Sixth Amendment or under North Carolina statute. So yes, it's all criminal cases, juvenile delinquency petitions. It's a lot of civil cases. If you're being involuntarily committed, you're entitled to an attorney. If you're a parent and DSS has instituted abuse, neglect, and dependency proceedings or termination of parental rights, you're entitled to a lawyer. There's a lot of work that gets done under the IDS umbrella. And basically, if the government is undertaking an action that might deprive you of one of your fundamental rights, your liberty, your family, you're entitled to a lawyer to make sure everything's done appropriately. So what are the challenges facing public defense? Davidson County right now does not have a public defender offices. The services here are provided 100% by private assigned counsel. These are private lawyers in private practice who are willing to do this work for much less money than they would make doing 100% retained cases or other types of legal work. The hourly rates that we pay range from $65 an hour in district court to 100 for capital cases. Most of our work is done in district court, most of it's misdemeanors and the parent defense work that I just talked about. And there was a study that the state bar, no, it was the North Carolina Bar Association did probably 10 years ago that talked about like what is the overhead to run a law practice? And at that time, it was more than $50 an hour. So people who are doing this work for us, they're doing it out of a sense of public service and professional obligation. They're not doing it because they're making a lot of money. Most of them are probably losing money on the work. But God bless them. I am so grateful to every private lawyer who was willing to do this work because it's hard work and we can't pay them enough. We continue to try to get funding to pay them more. So there's that. So that's, you know, the fiscal challenges. What are the challenges we have? It's hard to find enough private lawyers to take court-appointed cases. The pay doesn't cover the overhead. The competition pays so much better. The federal-appointed work in federal criminal court starts at $150 an hour. And there's simply other areas of practice that are more lucrative than doing indigent criminal defense. That bullet point there, PAC fund insufficient to meet demand, it hasn't happened in a long time. Well, since 2016, but it may happen again in the future soon where the state has run out of money to pay these lawyers in April or May and we can't pay them again until July in the new budget year. So there's been ongoing challenges with this. What happens when your public defense system is inadequately resourced? And I would encourage you to talk to your, or hear from your local actors about this, the judges and the DA and the people who do the work. Cases move slow. People can't get their day in court, right? Justice delay is justice denied. People stay in your jail longer than they should, right? And that's costly for the county. People are just in a hurry to get their cases over. Sometimes they plead guilty when they shouldn't. Rare but catastrophic are wrongful convictions and we've seen many examples of that. Improper or excessive sentences. You know, I think if you're convicted, you got to serve your time, right? But you should serve the time that the legislature said you should serve and we want to make sure it's calculated properly. We have a very complicated structured sentencing scheme. We see a lot of mistakes when people are rushed. It's just not good. Collateral consequences that affect a person's ability to learn a living and reenter society. Like I said before, most of the work that we do is in district court and it's people who have made a mistake and a lot of young people who have made a mistake and they've got to, they've got to deal with that, right? But they need to be represented by counsel to make sure it's dealt with in the best way possible so they can pay the price, serve their time, pay their fine, whatever, and get back on the path to doing the right thing and being good tax-paying citizens and not go on that path where they get a bad prior record level and maybe the next misdemeanor they do puts them in prison and then they're not going to, they're not going to be contributing members of society. So it's just, it's really important to have good lawyers. You all used to be District 22, right? You're District 33 now. So one of the challenges that we face is that our bar that we've relied on, the private assigned counsel, we call them PAC, and I'm sorry to keep going back into that jargon, but the PAC attorneys, it used to be folks would come out of law school and they would open up a practice and they would maybe be general practitioners and take some appointed work as part of their practice and again, kind of do that professional obligation. But the practice has really changed and our stalwarts are kind of aging out of doing the indigent work and they're not being replaced by younger attorneys. So I just, I think District 22, this is an old slide, but the average age of bar admittance was 1996. Not as bad as some places, but that's the average. So a lot of your lawyers are kind of getting up to where they're going to retire. The state globally or overall and the state bar is looking at the problem of legal deserts in North Carolina. And again, with these demographic changes in the profession, most of the new lawyers are heading toward Wake County and Mecklenburg County and specializing, doing different types of practice. I will tell you that people at the state bar, people at the bar association are kind of working to help encourage people to go into practice in smaller communities because there's beautiful places in every one of those 100 counties and there's a, there's a good, good living to be made and good work to be had. So there are people out there trying to kind of shore up the bar outside the big cities, but that doesn't mean we don't have a problem right now. So as you can see, the state bar defines a legal desert as an area where there is less than one lawyer for every 1,000 residents. 48 North Carolinian counties qualify as a legal desert. And you can see yourselves, Davidson County is orange, right? So that is a legal desert, less than one lawyer per 1,000 residents. And here in the judicial district, it's Davidson and Davie. Davie's a little bit. Davie's a little bit better off, but not enough, not out of danger. So this is just a little bit about what I talked about. Half of the lawyers in North Carolina are in two counties. 63% are in five counties. And all of our other counties need more lawyers. So what are the solutions that we have? In 2017, this was before I came to IDS. I'm relatively new to state government. I was in private practice for a lot of years, so I've been with IDS since 2020. But before my time in 2017, the former chief justice of the state Supreme Court, Mark Martin, who's now the dean at High Point Law School, not too far away from here, he convened the Commission on the Administration of Law and Justice. And this was kind of a blue-ribbon panel to look at different issues in the court systems. And there was a subcommittee studying indigenous defense. And it was made up of lawyers who do the work, but also district attorneys, judges, community leaders, law enforcement. And they studied public defense, indigenous defense, and they made a series of recommendations after doing a very deep dive. And their first recommendation was to establish or expand the public defender system throughout the state. And then there are a number of other things that we are trying our best to do, right? Provide oversight services and support to all of the private lawyers and provide them with reasonable compensation. Implement uniform standards so people statewide, or there's just a uniform way of determining who's entitled to these services. Implement uniform qualification and workload standards. We want to make sure that the people who are being paid with the tax dollars to do the work are qualified to do it and are providing good representation to their clients. So that was a recommendation back in 2017. And when I started back in 2020, you know, things had gotten worse and not better since 2017. So when the commission talked to me about why I wanted this job, one of the reasons I talked, one of the proposals I brought to them was I thought that Justice Martin's commission had it right and that the expansion of the public defender system to all areas of need would be a good path for IDS. And does that mean statewide? Well, look at that map, and maybe it does. As we move forward, and we have moved forward pretty aggressively with the expansion of public defender offices, there's a lot of, lot of communities who want them, a lot of places who want them. We have to take the proposal to the legislature, and each district has to be authorized by the legislature. So I can't make this happen because I think it's a good idea. And I, the legislature has to authorize it. As we move forward, we had eight offices open this year in 2024. So we went from 19 offices covering 38 counties to 28 offices covering 60 counties in a year. It took us 50 years to get to those 39 counties. And the eight offices that we opened and that we pushed, we didn't go as IDS and say, these folks need an office. We partnered with the local people who had been reaching out to us in the greatest areas of need and worked together. The lawyers, the judges, the DAs, IDS, talked to legislators, and the legislators listened and gave us authorization to open eight new offices. So this is just kind of bullet points about public defender offices. There's something I need to say, and this is really important. Where we have public defender offices, they don't and can't do 100% of the work. There's a very high conflict rate in criminal cases. Lawyers can't ethically represent co-defendants, so a lot of the work has to be farmed out to private assigned counsel. In parent defense cases, if the office chooses to do the parent defense, you have at least a 50% conflict rate. So there's always going to be a need for the private bar. And I think that's good. I think that's a good thing. The private assigned counsel we have doing the work, some of them are the best lawyers you would ever want to have, right? You couldn't hire a better lawyer, you know, if you had the money to do it. They do it because they have a heart for the work, they have a sense of obligation. There's always going to be plenty of work for the folks who want to do it but don't want to join the public defender offices. And in some of these districts where we've opened PD offices, we still don't have enough private lawyers to do that overflow work. So I, there's not going to be, I guess, a loss of, loss of jobs for the local lawyers. There will still be plenty of work for them, maybe too much. You know, in the cities, we have a different challenge. We have public defender offices in Wake County and Mecklenburg, and there's plenty of lawyers, plenty of lawyers in Wake and Mecklenburg, but there's more competition there for that federal work and the higher-paying work. So we have shortages there, too, but not here to talk about that. But private-assigned lawyers are great. Public defender offices are great, and Justice Martin's report touched on this, but, you know, when you look at outcomes, people who study these things look at outcomes, private, public defender offices do a good job, right? They get consistent, good-quality representation. Sometimes, you know, you get highs and lows elsewhere, but you get consistent, good-quality representation. That makes sense because you've got a chief public defender who's in charge of supervising the office, and if somebody's not performing, you know, they can move on. They are efficient. They are, help the cases move through the courts more quickly, and we all need that. We all need that. And I think the efficiency you see in PD districts is why we've had so much support from the administrative office of the courts, the chief justice, and the folks who work there on these efforts. The costs are predictable. The legislature sets the budget and the salaries. The attorneys tend to live and work in the districts. They're available for court when the judges need them in court. They're there. They're not over in another county trying a case. They're right here in Davidson County or right there in Davie County. And for the private lawyers, when they know they could take occasional cases and not have to take 100% of the cases, which can lead to crushing caseloads sometimes, they'll step up and do more work for us. So it's all around a general good thing. So this is the map of currently where we have public defender districts. This is our long-term plan. We want to make sure everybody who needs one has that availability by the end of the decade. Again, that's, we can't make that happen without legislative approval. Let me talk to you a little bit how it works. The local office, this is truly, these are truly local offices. This isn't Raleigh coming in to run your, your public defense system. The chief public defender is selected by, the local bar, all the lawyers in the community get together, and they submit names to the senior resident judge. And then the director of AOC consults with me, and we submit another name of a local person. And then the senior resident judge makes the decision about who the chief public defender is. It's a four-year term. At the end of the four years, the local bar votes again, and they submit names again, and the senior resident makes the decision at that time. So there are local offices. The chief public defender has a lot of discretion over how to manage the office. We don't come in and tell him or her how to do that. They know the cases, they know the needs in your community better than somebody sitting in Raleigh does. So they might think, okay, I need to hire more lawyers to do felonies and fewer lawyers to do misdemeanors, or my community really has a need for parent defense, so we are going to do that in my office. Or there's a, I don't know if you have a local, if you have a lot of involuntary commitments in the district, maybe that's something they're going to do and have. So they have a lot of discretion, discretion over how to run the office. They decide who to hire. They decide who to fire. That all happens locally. We're basically the, once we get the office up and running, we're the budgetary and administrative oversight, right? We provide them with the computers and the HR support and training and guidance, and we have CLE provided through the School of Government, make sure everybody's trained so they can do a good job. So that's, that's our role out of Raleigh. And what does this mean for, well, what does this, what does this mean? I'm here, I've been invited, thank you. I know there's been discussion of a PD office in Davidson and Davie County for some time. I believe that it would be a good thing for your community. I believe that because local actors have reached out to me and said, hey, this sounds like it might be, we would like this in Davidson County. And have you had the opportunity to share the email from Judge Carlton?
Yeah.
Yeah. And he's on the ground, right? He sees what happens. I think there are some other folks here today who sees what happens, who see what happens and how this could be a benefit. With local support, I'm inclined to make this one of the offices we would push for as IDS in the long session, which starts in 2025. But again, that's with local support. I think it's there with the stakeholders. I know it's there with a significant number of the stakeholders. I would like it for it to be there for you. What is the county's role? The county is charged by statute with providing the space. It's in that, I think the stat, you get some money from the facilities fee, right? That every defendant pays $12 for, right? And some of that comes back to you through the AOC, and it's, if you have a, well, for your DA's office, your courthouse, your public defender office, if you have one. So the county would have to provide the space. We provide, so the county provides the space and the desks and the chairs, and we provide the filing cabinets. I don't know why that differentiation got made, but we provide the filing cabinets and the phones and the internet and the laptops. You've just got to get the wire to the, to the door, and we take it from there. And that's, that's my pitch, I guess. So any questions or concerns or?
Ms. Pollard, on the phone line real quick. You guys are shooting for what part of 2025?
So this is, this is the part I really hate, is kind of, it's a little bit of a chaotic process. And I'm glad we're having this discussion today because we got one surprise office in the last budget where we didn't know it was coming, because sometimes local people just go get their reps to do things. And nobody knew it was coming, and it was a little chaotic getting it up and running. The legislature will come back in January for their long session, and in the long session, they're charged with passing a biennial budget. And if they're going to authorize public defender expansion in a particular district, they do that, and they provide the funding in that biennial budget. From your standpoint, none of us, you won't know and I won't know until that budget drops, whether Davidson County is in there, right? So I get it. You don't want to go out and build a PD office right now, or, because you just don't know. But it could be. When will that budget happen? So historically, you know, the budgets due July 1, but I think the last, at least the last two biennial budgets, and I think going back further in time, they didn't drop until the fall. And for this past one, the budget didn't, we finally got it in October. The budget was certified. We can't spend the money until the budget is certified, I think in December, and our offices were supposed to open January 1. Obviously, that, that didn't happen, right? So we're still rolling those offices out. But I would guess that, you know, I would like, and again, in working with, with the legislature this go around, I would like for them to kind of work with us to give you a little bit of space or room to get it built, like authorize it, but make it effective in the second year of the biennium, which would be?
Twenty-six.
Yeah, July 1, 2026. But I don't, you know, I don't know. If they just let me write it, right? We do a different, but they, things happen the way they happen. So sometime in 2026, hopefully with some kind of lead time for you all to plan for a facility. And then, you know, and to select a chief public defender, and for that public defender to advertise and interview her or his staff, and for us to buy laptops, which takes longer than you would think, and all that good stuff, so, okay.
Commissioner Walker?
Could you go back to the map that shows the desert? So we're, it looks like we're in the middle of a huge desert. It would be the next one, where you already have offices. Okay, that one.
That's where we have offices.
That's where you have offices. Is the fact that we are surrounded by places that do not have a public defender's office, would that, for us to be the only one around all these other areas, would that be a problem for us? I mean, would we be, have problems because other counties around us do not have it?
I think it might, it might actually be the other way around, where the counties around you would be a little bit, oh, Davidson's got a public defender office, and they're going to, you know?
Okay.
And we don't. Looking, looking at the, I think one of the reasons that we are having, so you're kind of, there's this whole central part of the state without the public defender offices, and the desert create, the desert kind of makes itself worse, worse, because you have lawyers who are trying to cover cases in multiple counties. And that really complicates things for your courts.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Just a little clarification, Commissioner Walker, your question about problem, do you mean other county sending their people to us? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought that's what she was saying.
Sorry.
Because we have, we would have a public defender's office. These other counties are sending their people to us.
They can't. They, if it's a, this is for Davidson County charges, Davie County charges, right? Davie would be a, right? If you're charged in Randolph County, Randolph County's got to deal with you, right? If it's DSS and Guilford County, Guilford County's, well, they have got to deal with you. But this would, this would be for your county.
Our district.
Your community, your constituents, your sheriff, your jail. This is, this would be a Davidson, well, Judicial District 33, so Davidson and Davie. The office would be funded probably as that district, and the chief would have to decide how to divvy up the staff. The workload is heavier in Davidson County, so you would, you would have probably more than half of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
How many public defenders would you say that Davidson County should have?
Okay, so we spec'd out, we have a research guy, and he sifts data all day long. And the way we scope out a public defender's office is we look at the demand in your district. How many cases did IDS have to pay private-assigned counsel to handle? How many hours? How does that hour translate? How do those hours translate into a workload? And then we calculate that. We assume that the public defender's going to take a pretty heavy workload, right? This is, you know, they're going to work a lot. But we also assume that the conflict rate will be 25 or 30%. So we back that out, and we calculate a number of people. And for the judicial district, which is Davidson and Davie County, last time we looked at this, which was in 2022, the judicial district office would have had 18 employees. 11 of those would have been attorneys. I would guess it would probably be four and, five and six, or four and seven, with more in Davidson County. Now, we'll have to redo those numbers for the 2025 budget because demand has gone up a little bit. My guess is you might need a few more bodies than we would have thought in 2022.
Did I understand you right when, did you say that the chief public defender would hire private counsel as needed, lack of appointed attorneys for example?
So, no, the chief public defender, these are state employees. So the chief public defender would hire, would maintain a roster, and he would hire those 11 lawyers, right? Or she would hire those 11 lawyers. And then they would, they would maintain the roster of private assigned counsel and make those lawyers available to the court as needed. The way it works in most districts is that the clerk of court gives all the cases to the chief public defender. The chief public defender will say, okay, my office is going to keep this one. We have a conflict, so Ms. Brown is going to take this one, and divvies them up outside the, outside the office.
Oh, within his, his staff?
Well, no, it's, it's going to be 70% his staff, 30% outside, is I think what we would estimate.
That's what I was asking, the 30%.
Right, right. It still goes to, yes. And that's why we're always going to need the private bar. Right now, about, I'd say 90% of the work done in this district is done by 20 lawyers.
Twenty?
Yeah, and they are, they are, some of them have some pretty significant caseloads. There's still going to be plenty of work for those lawyers. We, we're not putting anybody out of business, or we haven't historically. And in fact, a number of these districts, and I hope this never becomes the case here, but District 1, we don't have any lawyers to do the overflow work, and we're, they're begging and borrowing, and, but they're, they're a little bit more rural, a little bit more sprawling. I think this is a lovely community, and I hope you'll always have a private bar here.
Who does the public defender, the chief public defender, who does he answer to?
He's an appointed official. He's an appoint, he's appointed by your senior resident judge. And the senior resident will make the decision, well, the local bar will submit names to the senior resident every four years. So if the person isn't doing a good job, the local bar is not going to submit their name to the senior resident. If they are doing a good job, they still have to submit multiple names to the senior resident, and that person makes the decision. So that's, there's some accountability there. And we have data we can provide to the decision-makers about kind of, are they pulling their weight? Are they doing a good job upon request? So, yeah.
In the county's view of the public defender's office, how much has it decreased the population in the jails?
I can't answer that specifically, but I can refer you to some sheriffs who can talk with you about how that's happened in New Hanover County, Rutherford County. The, my, my... County, um, the, uh, my, my, I'm told, I haven't confirmed that in our brand-new District Seven, it's already having an effect.
Because I think that was one of the, and, uh, Commissioner, I mean, Judge Hamilton can probably correct me on this if I may correct, but I think that was one of the points that, uh, Ju- Judge Carlton made was the expediency of getting through the population of the jail as a plus on, on this.
Well, because it's, it's really expensive to hold people in the jail. And so I know on, on the one hand, you're, you're, you're going to have to come up with a little office space, but on the other hand, it's just, being in the jail isn't good for anybody, right? It's, it's expensive. Um, if you don't belong there, you shouldn't be there. If you're convicted, I mean, if you need to be convicted and get to prison, you need to be convicted and get to prison, where there are, you know, it's, you're better off in prison where there are programs, and, and you can start working your way back toward a re-entry. So, it's, I don't know.
Yeah, a quick question on, um, the space and kind of expense to the county. So, obviously, if we're going to have Davidson and Davie, I'm assuming it'd be similar to District Thirty-two with Iredale, just because we're similar in size, um, and probably a decent-sized staff. So are there estimates, or can you quote estimates of what these spaces generally cost for a district our size, and what we would be kind of in for from an expense standpoint?
So, what, we leave that up to the county, and what we ask the county to do is to provide kind of a similar level of, and quality of office that you provide for your district attorneys. Um, and we don't try to micromanage that, um, in terms of square footage per person, or, uh, you know, or, or that sort of thing. And I can certainly kind of get you some, um, information about what other counties have done. Um, we do, it's, it's most efficient, um, for everybody involved if the office can be within walking distance of the jail and the courthouse. Um, is your, is your jail downtown here, or, yeah?
Yes.
Uh, there's a handful of communities where the jail's up here and the courthouse is over here, in which case it's probably better to be near the courthouse. But, um, that, that's ideal. Um, I, I know sometimes spaces at a premium near the courthouse, and find a place with ample parking. I, I don't know, but we do not micromanage the counties on that. We just expect kind of, because you all have standards, right? I mean, you have people working in this building here, and you have people working in the courthouse. And, yeah, they're, they're sufficient, I'm sure. Yeah, thank you, sure.
Any other questions?
Judge Hamilton, do you have something you want to say about this, or?
Uh, only to add that, uh, I did a little research, and back in nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, which was the last IDS commission study that I could find, we had four thousand four hundred and seventeen folks who were served by indigent defense services. So those are four thousand four hundred and seventeen folks that were represented by roughly twenty lawyers. And that doesn't really give you a, an accurate picture. We have twenty total lawyers that do most of those, uh, cases, but we only have eight folks who are handling the serious felonies. So, these lawyers, and I, I keep begging them just to hold on, just hold on, don't leave us, because we have folks who are leaving the list. It's just too much for them. They're handling hundreds of cases for indigent defense, making about sixty-five dollars an hour. With all due respect to the representative from AOC, they don't always get paid timely. It's sometimes months before they get their money. And it's just not a workable business model for a lot of these folks. And I certainly understand that and appreciate everybody who's willing to do it. Um, but just so that you have an accurate picture, we have some folks that are handling literally hundreds of indigent defense cases every year. Um, if you're one person handling that many cases, obviously, you're not moving them as quickly as you might otherwise do. You're not spending the time, because you don't have it on the cases, so that you can do the best job that you can do. And so, because of that, folks are lingering in the jail longer, which is costing us money. We have case backlogs, which is costing us a choke point at the, uh, clerk's office, just overworking those folks. Next year, Odyssey's coming in, which is going to be an even bigger problem for us, um, and slow us down even more. So if we can get the public defender's office and get this steady, consistent, um, resource for indigent defense services, we can move cases faster, we can get people out of the jail, we can move the, move the expense, if there's going to be an expense along to the state for incarceration or whatever other services need to, need to be in place.
Mr. Vice, I, I also believe, if I'm not mistaken, that we received something from Gary Frank as well as, uh, stating he was, he liked the services that they had given in the past. Do you remember that?
Yeah, and I, I spoke to Gary yesterday, um, and he's, you know, he's basically saying the same thing that Judge Hamilton here is, and Ms. Pollard is, is that the market out here, we're, we're not taking from the market, because the market's not, is depleting faster than the cases are growing. So, and, you know, from his perspective, at some point in time, this will be a must-have.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Mizell's not on the facilities committee. We, he was skipping ahead to the next part, which is the, I, I can, we can share some information about the facility in just a moment. Um, but that's, you're, you're, you know, you have the service with the people, and then next comes the facility or the space. So, uh, but I, you know, the need appears to be something that's growing every day.
Yeah.
Well, I, and I agree with Judge, Judge Hamilton here. We, you know, we've got people sitting in jail, but they're sitting there four years waiting to be tried. Actually, you ain't got a case in four years, you need to let them go.
Ah.
And, but it's not fair to them. Uh, I've, I've also, Judge got people out that had court-appointed attorneys, don't even know what a court-appointed attorney looks like, never talked to them, never seen them. And I think that's something we need to take a, we need to take a look at as well.
That's, that's an issue that's addressed in large part with the public defender's office.
Yeah.
Because that's all they do.
Yeah.
And they're usually located somewhere near the jail. So they're going to be in the jail, they're going to be in the courtroom. We're not looking for them, because they're in some other county handling some other cases, because they got to do everything they can do to make a living. We've got a PD's office set here. These people stay here, they're in the courtroom. That's one of the reasons the DA likes to have a public defender's office, because they have ready access to the defense lawyers. We don't have to be looking for them and waiting for them.
I think, I think initially, I think I made myself pretty clear, I'm for the private sector, over, over any increase in government spending, you know? But, once I've looked at this, we're almost to the form where it's a must-be. I hate to say that, but that's, that's the way it is. You've got too many people sitting in the doggone jail that need representation, need to go and get through this court. So if you're sitting up there waiting on them, get on the bench, and they just don't come. But, uh, after reviewing , uh, Judge, uh, Carlton's, and Gary's, and hearing some other things, I, I'm at the point here where I'm, I'm saying something that's got to be done.
Yeah.
People can't just languish in jail for four years. I've got one, that I wrote back in twenty seventeen.
Oh, my.
It's still, and, I mean, it's ridiculous sometimes, but it's, it's a, it's an overburden, overloaded court system.
Yeah.
And, uh, jail, we're, citizens are paying these fees every day, especially if they go medical, you know, so, but, thank you, Judge.
That's right, thank you.
Commissioner Waterman?
Uh, Ms. Hamilton, um-
Yes.
I've almost forgotten my question. What is Odyssey? You said that was coming on, and, and that was-
Right. Yes, I'm sorry.
-detailed to this.
I, I assume that we have all talked about that. So, the state has implemented a paperless system. The, the, the ca, the name is Odyssey. It's E-Coords, essentially. Um, but we're going to be learning, that's coming to us, I think, next fall, I believe, is my understanding.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and that's all, that's all on the state side, and we're, we're going to be adjusting to that, and, uh, learning how to do something new.
And as DSS chair, you know, it sounds like this certainly, I mean, we talked to Ms. Woodyard, um, and, and she talked, tells us about the slowness of everything with, with regard to DSS as well, and this has got to help in that area.
Well, it's the same lawyers that are doing all the work.
Yes.
So if they're going to be in district court with, you know, Judge Terry, or with me in Superior Court, they can't be with Ms. Woodyard and DSS Court. And, and if they're with her, they can't be with us.
Right.
Any other questions for Judge Hamilton?
Thank you.
Judge Hine, do you have anything to add, or?
Uh, good afternoon, seeing Commissioner's neighbors. Uh, Ms. I won't belabor the point with the time. I, I, I pay taxes like y'all do. I understand the, the concern that it's going to cost us long-term. It, it's not. I think Commissioner Shell and Commissioner Watford kind of have a beat on that. If it improves the quality of representation, which it does, saves us money on the back end. Respectfully, apart from dotting i's and crossing the t's, it's, it's a no-brainer. It's worked. Um, I'll speak to anyone that wants to speak to me, uh, later at length, to not, uh, delay everyone else's day, but, um, they're stretched thin, and she said if, if someone's in Superior Court and the attorney's here, they're on three or four lists. I may be holding child support that day. I need the lawyer that's in DSS, but they were called to Moxville to do Davie Superior Court before they go back and turn two tickets in traffic court, just so they can make a living, too. And, uh, I was on the list for many years. It was a privilege. Um, you don't make a lot of money on it, but it's not just about that. Um, let you get your seasoning a, as an attorney, so you can better represent everyone else. But, uh, respectfully, I'll, I'll leave that to the decision-makers, but I, I think it's time. Um, we don't want to be proactive. We're right on course where it is. We are in a legal desert, which it doesn't seem like, and we're growing and expanding. And, uh, I am in favor of it, respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Casey, what do you need?
Um, Dwayne, and I see Dan Norman here. Danny, can I borrow you just for a second? Um, we won't have to get in-depth, in-depth in this. I mean, we've got to twenty twenty-six, is what my ears are hearing. So, we don't know what the legislators are going to do. I did have a quick question. Um, since Davie's involved, I assume there won't be an office there as well. It'll just be the one office that staffs both-
So Davie County would have to provide some space for the satellite office there.
Okay, all right. I didn't know, because then that gets into a cost sharing with what we may have to do here and all that kind of. And the other thing, there's, I, I think you answered this in the beginning. There's no opportunity to partner with another district, say, in Forsyth County example, to have staff from here be there, to, to see, I hate to say try out, but go, go forward for a little while to see how things work before we in, invest it in a space?
So the, there is a Forsyth County public defender's office, and they are really overloaded at the moment. I don't know that they could, like, administratively expand.
Handle another group of eleven.
And, and what we like to do, we want to do this the most cost-efficient way possible, because it is tax dollars, and that's why those, those lawyers are going to work really hard, right? Um, but if, if a, if it, if a district can sustain its own, have enough cases to sustain its own office, we like to keep it within district, because you, you pick up the other efficiencies, because all you're doing is Davidson County or Davie County, and, and you're not having to worry about being called to court in Forsyth or Guilford. Uh, there's a couple of areas of the state where we have more regional offices, because there are so few cases. It just, just doesn't make sense to have a chief public defender in, in the county. It would just not be cost-efficient for them to, so, but, but for your, for your district, it makes the most sense to do it, um, as, as a standalone, as a standalone. And if it doesn't work, I guess, I mean, it's never been known to happen, but, you know, you could reverse course down the road. But honestly, I, I think it's, um, I, I think it's a good thing. And unless there was a significant change in, in lots of things, it's, yeah.
Um, Danny, if I can borrow you just for a second. So, we've got shell space at the courthouse that was going to be for future Superior Courts. So the, the shell of the space is there. So now the question is just kind of, I guess, fixing up the inside of it. In our capital plan, we put up a number, and I think at that point, you're talking now, that number is a year old. Uh, it was kind of a guess of around four hundred thousand dollars to get, you know, you got to put walls on the inside, get some of the wiring, I guess, to the point, from point A to point B, so they can take it from B to C. But Danny, is there any, now, a little bit more, Dwayne, any more firm cost on what that shell space will take to get it ready to go for eleven people?
We, um, I, I did have an initial cost for what we thought it was going to be. Um, I was trying to give them a proposal to do an outfit, because we have an existing, um, basically the future, uh, Superior courtroom. We're going to try to convert that. I did come up with a plan that we could actually, I think it was, create eleven offices, along with, you know, copper trims and all the different things that they're going to need. Um, the cost per square foot, it really came back to, um, I think it was, we were thinking around about, was it two hundred, three hundred dollars a square foot for the outfit? Now, I was trying to give them a cost of just what it was going to take just to redo the, those areas, because it does not have HVAC in it. It has the minimal sprinkler, because all that has to be implemented and done. Uh, it really came back more of make sure that we had the right program. In other words, the right number of offices, the sizes, those type things. So that's where we were kind of-
And it sounds like we're, we're on the hook for the FFNE, too, um, on the inside, other than the cabinetry, I guess, or the file cabinets. But, I mean, any ballpark all-in, what all that would run? I mean, it, we put four hundred in, but I don't know if that's going to be the number.
I don't think it's going to be enough, no, sir.
I mean, we talking north of a million?
I would say so, yes.
Yeah.
Comfortable.
So, again, we planned for four, and had that planned in our, in our models of what we do cash-wise around here. You can hear with your ears, it's probably going to end up being a little bit more, or a lot more than that, um, to get it up to eleven people to get going. But-
I'd like to, Danny, to go back. What were you saying about the HVAC?
The, the HVAC is, is pretty much, that's a shell space. It's non-occupied. So whenever we did the courthouse and did the outfit, we had the, a district court, and then we also had a Superior Court that was set as future. Nothing in there. I mean, you have nothing doors and no ceilings, no, no anything.
No HVAC, no, no, no ving or anything like that for HVAC?
It'd be minimal. It's just to keep the, um, keep it where it's just the shell space.
Yeah, they got to work in there. They got to be comfortable, you know?
Yeah, that was one of the things. We had it set up as, you know, it's not occupiable. In other words, it's, it's not occupied. So whenever we did our work there, that was just the way it was set.
I guess at some point in time, when you guys get a little bit firmer number, I mean, and remember, that number now is possibly going to have to be futuristic in the terms of twenty twenty-six. So the number you give today, you might as well inflate it twelve months from now. Um, and when, the faster you can give us the guys a number, I'll, I'll funnel it to them. So I, I'd like for them to know, is it one million? Is it one point? You know, it makes a big difference. When it's one point five, one point two, one point one, I don't know today. I mean, it sounds like we're north of a million to make this happen.
Were you factoring in individual offices or cubicles, or how you, how, were you factoring that? Because it has to be individual off, got to have some privacy there.
Yeah, it's, it looked a lot like the DA's face now. Um, Danny's right, when you go in, it just opens up as a room. It's just basically like a giant, it has no drop ceiling or nothing. So, um, it looked a lot like comparable, I guess, to what the DA has.
Kind of a proposed plan with a specific layout, and they did give individual offices that-
Okay.
-kind of generically put together, uh, just as an exercise, finding out, okay, how many offices can we get in there? So I would, I would like to possibly talk with them about, you know, the, the sizes, also offices, those type things.
Right.
Because I just had to make a guess, you know?
And an additional conference room, you said, right?
Yes, I have a, yeah, conference room. There's also a work break room, uh, those type things, and also a, a front entry-like lobby, kind of administrative.
Casey, this new system, camera system that we just talked about putting in for the jail and the judges, is, would that have to be expanded to them as well?
I'm not sure. That'd be something we'll have to check with Major Louis Young and Judge Hamilton.
Judge Hamilton, the, the camera system that we just talked about with the sheriff's office, that new camera system?
Crave.
Crave. Would that have to be part of this, or do they?
It's in the courtroom, yeah.
That, okay.
Yeah.
I knew they needed it for their attorneys to talk to them, so that, that wouldn't be, so that's a, a cost that we would not have to, okay, thank you. And I have one other question, uh, for our clerk. Is this going to add to your staff and responsibilities as well?
No, sir. Uh, because we already, um, whenever attorneys are appointed, we make copies for those court-appointed attorneys, and so that, that process would be the same. It would be the same. There would be no, no additional work. Um, we can scan and email them copies, just like we can the local attorneys, or make them paper copies, either one. There would not be any additional work at all.
So, Casey, we got anything else with this?
I don't think there's anything for the board to do today. It's more for Mr. Norman and Dwayne to start honing in on this cost. We probably need to get back to facilities and, and start looking at that plan a little bit. I'm looking at Steve, because he's on that committee. Make sure we got the plan of the layout, you know, as, as efficient as possible. Um, but just be prepared for a number that's obviously going to be north of a million dollars. Probably somewhere in that range of the one to two million, be my hunch, before it's all said and done.
State's not willing to give some up, are they?
I wish. Although, if you, if you're moving those cases faster, you'll got those twelve dollars then, right?
All right, seven B. Thomasville City Schools, permission to apply for needs-based public school capital funding. Mr. Smith?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Um, I've got Dr. Williams here, and it looks like members of the Thomasville, uh, School Board. At the last meeting, I'm going to set the stage, and I'm going to let Dr. Williams take over. Um, you guys looked at the county, you know, the, the needs-based grants from DPI are, are up again for apply. These school districts, all three of them have applied in the past, uh, for renovations, for, you know, either doing it for a new high school, or trying to renovate for the high school up here at Lexington. Um, we've also had, you know, the, the county schools have approached us with individual, uh, schools for HVAC replacement and roofs, et cetera. So at the last meeting, you guys saw a proposal from the county schools, for, I think it was close to around ten million dollars to do some HVAC work, and, um, I think there were some roofs mixed in in there as well. Thomasville's here today to talk about Thomasville High School. So I just want to set the stage for Lexington is also working on an application. And I'm going to share some information with you after Dr. Williams-
Then I'm going to share some information with you after Dr. Williams gets done, and you'll be seeing probably Lexington Monday evening, but he's here to explain what they would like to submit for as well. So I'm going to turn it over to him.
Absolutely. Great morning, County Commissioners. Quincy Williams, Pro superintendent of Thomasville City Schools. Thank you for this opportunity to present our request for your support for our needs-based public schools. And I say ours because I am here with, largely with folks. We have our board chair, Mr. Doc Lex Taylor, our vice chair, Wendy Sellers, board member Tiffany Beluga-Brandon, and board member Nancy Stating. We have our CFO, Ms. Iessis, our CTE director, Ms. Roberts, who has been working on programs. One of the things we've done is research from the last time it was not approved, and we needed to really advance our programs, our CTE programs. We've been looking at a couple of new programs, cyber security and then fire EMT, to really pour back into our community. And then our brand-new principal at Thomasville High School, Dr. William Nguyen, who is experienced with new building projects. And also, I have with me our architect team from, that has helped write the grant, Mr. Robbie Ferris is with us, and also, I have to say this thing the right way, Miyuki Keller, Miyuki Keller, with us. And this gentleman is?
Johnny Sam.
John, who?
Johnny Sam.
From Sam. Yes, absolutely. So let me just briefly talk, and then whatever questions you guys may have. Do they have copies of the grant application?
I think so, yeah.
With the budget? So I'm just going to talk about the need from, from the school, from the district perspective, and why this is important. We believe this grant is a critical step towards constructing a new high school that will serve our community for generations to come. As you may know, Thomasville High School was built almost 70 years ago, faces challenges due to outdated systems, limited space, and facilities that no longer meet current educational standards to accommodate a potentially growing student population. I think the last major renovation, I think, for when I saw was 2002, provided some updates. But the campus layout with multiple separate buildings presents significant safety concerns, especially in emergency requiring lockdowns, evacuations, and consistently, consistent daily monitoring. And as you saw yesterday with all the things that's happening with schools, we, we want to make sure our school is safe. As you almost, you also know, our district only has one high school. Offering families no other in-district option. This lack of choice restricts educational opportunities for our students. We are committed to ensuring that one single choice that they have is the best option. So we believe a new consolidated facility would greatly enhance our ability to ensure the safety and security of all our students and staff by centralizing all classrooms and activities under one roof with modern safety systems and designs. We believe a new, modern facility will provide an environment conducive to learning, creativity, and innovation. It will be a place where students feel valued and inspired. The new high school will be fully accessible, ensuring every student, regardless of ability, can participate fully in their education. Studies show that modernized school facilities can boost student performance up to 16%. We believe a new high school isn't just a structure, it's a statement about who we are as a community and what we value most, our children and their future. Having the opportunity to build a new high school is more than just construction. It represents a generational shift in how our students view themselves and their future potential. We believe a new facility will serve as a focal point for our community activities, promoting engagement and fostering a sense of unity. And also, it would attract our families and our students back to our high school and to our district. That's what we firmly believe. This investment will have a lasting impact on how our students view themselves and their community instill in a sense of pride and ambition that they will, that would extend beyond the classroom. So today, we're asking for your partnership to make this, this vision a reality. Your support is not just an investment in the building, it's an investment in the future of Thomasville and its people. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
We're glad to meet you. Where's your high school population at the current?
Currently, right now, we're at, yesterday was 551.
551. Thank you.
Any other questions for the doctor? Go ahead.
I assume that you're going to be seeking the grant for 62 million, is that correct?
Correct.
But your project cannot exceed the aggregate, and I guess the aggregate would be matching plus that, correct?
Absolutely.
My own target is there, I just didn't understand it.
So I'll let Robbie talk about the budget in reference to the requests in the project.
Thank you. So the, the total estimated project cost is about $86 million, and so that's the cost. And then the sources of funding for that would be, of course, the, the big one would be the $62 million grant. And do y'all, do y'all have a copy of the, this budget sheet?
It's in the, yes, in the package.
It is in the grant application. So, so I'll just walk through the other sources of funding. There is some remaining project funds from a renovation project that they were going to do a few years ago. I don't know if y'all remember, they were going to renovate the existing career and technical building. And it bid, I don't remember the exact numbers, over $5 million, and that was a few years ago. So there is $1.1 million left in the renovation fund. We've estimated the sales tax refund coming back from the state at about $1.7 million. That could go into the project fund. And of course, you would apply, the county would apply for that as the project progresses. The school district has $4 million in their child nutrition fund that they're going to put into the project. That's a big, that's a big deal for them to have, to be able to put that, that $4 million into the project fund. There's a federal rebate that's relatively new. It's about $1.8 million. Now, the county would have to carry that until you actually get the check from the federal government. So once the building's done, you would apply for that rebate, and you would get that check. It more than, more than compensates you for the premium cost for that mechanical system, and you get a much better mechanical system. There's a DOT reimbursement of $150,000. And then, of course, your required match would be 9.3 million, because you're required to match, based on the, the level of wealth in the county, you're required to match 15%. So that's 9.3 million. And so we would be asking you for an additional $5.9 million for a total county contribution of 15.2 million. So that rounds out the entire budget. And obviously, we would be looking for ways in this process to save money every step of the way. There, there are things in the budget, and we can go into at whatever level of detail you'd like. There are things that we put in the budget that are placeholders. For example, we have soil improvement, $875,000. We don't know that we're going to have to spend that money, but, you know, it, it seems like more and more sites don't have the best soil, and so we put that in the budget just as a placeholder to make sure that we're covered in case that happens. We have a fire tank. We really don't know that that's going to be necessary. The school district's director of facilities has said he actually doesn't think it will be, but, but again, it's something we see more and more, so we've gone ahead and put that in the budget. Again, the demolition number, you know, we don't know what we're going to run into in terms of asbestos and things like that, so we feel like that's a little bit on the high side. So we feel like our budget is, is really adequate. We've tried to be conservative so that we're not coming back with surprises at the end of the process. And we do have Johnny Seeger's with Sammott. They're the construction manager that has been selected, and if y'all have any questions about costs of schools, I'm sure everyone's, you know, costs have gone up, we all know that. So together, I think we can answer any questions you have about that, if you have questions.
Questions?
I guess I've got a question, and maybe this is too far in advance and hasn't been thought through yet, I'm not sure. Can you talk a little bit about maybe like new safety features, or how the new facility would be improved for me? Just because, again, you said the old building's from like 1960, maybe before, like different era, different stuff going on than today, so I know safety's a big priority. So just, if you could talk a little bit about that?
And can I add, may I add to that as well? Concerns because CTE is so, going to be so important for our local economy and the local jobs, et cetera, so could you speak, speak to that as well?
Sure.
Okay.
The commitment that we made with the CTE department is the students that are in the school that participate would get active as a part of the construction. So we would select a group of kids to interview with our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing trades, and hire those students to work, especially if they're junior and senior students, right? So that's a kid that could be 17, 18 years old, have the opportunity to work as they're graduating, and have the chance to work full-time if they elect to go directly into the trades instead of going to college or whatever it may be. And the trade contractors would support that because they are looking for those, those students as they begin to age, or plumbers and electricians that begin to age out, they're looking for a group of 18, 19, 17-year-old students to, to fill those gaps. And we have that commitment with the department. That was a big part of the proposal that we submitted in. We've done it numerous times. We did it at Dudley High School, which is a high school in Guilford County. We had six to eight kids involved that were seniors, and they worked a fire station project with us, and they were hired by an electrician. One I spoke to just the other week is still now working with my electrician full-time. He's now 22 years old. So the time moves on, we've done it successfully countless times, and it would be a big part of this project as well. So that, that may be something that can answer.
I think that's great. You know, I told my grandson, I said, learn a trade, you'll never go hungry.
That's right. Pretty true.
My dad taught me that, too.
Did he?
He was a contractor.
Yep.
Okay, so to the issue of security. So when Columbine, y'all remember Columbine, right? Years ago. So when that was happening, I was a young architect then, and we were really tuned in to safety and security. So we brought in a consultant, her name was Dr. Diane Zahn, and we really tuned in on, there was a new organization started, starting up called SEPTED. It was Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And the basic, the basic premise is, is that you want to eliminate the places in which bad things typically happen. And, and we've gotten really good at that in school design over the years. We've learned where those bad things happen, you know? Don't have any hallways that are hidden back behind the gym or the auditorium. If you've got a stair at the end of the building, because you need a stair to exit in case there's a fire, put an alarm on that, because if you don't, there's bad things that are going to happen in that stair. So the big move is to eliminate the places in which bad things happen. The next big move is to create sightlines. Now, one of the problems that have, we've seen in some of the more recent school safety occurrences is that when police do get there, they can't see where the bad things are happening. So we're trying to create really, really broad sightlines, so that a SWAT team or that, that a school resource officer or a police officer can walk into the school, very quickly identify where things are happening. Now, day-to-day, what we want to do is keep those things from happening, so we have a lot of transparency. Generally, our schools now are much more open, so teachers can observe students. We don't put the media center off in a corner anymore. The media center's kind of in the middle of the building, and students are going to that media center. They don't call it a media center anymore. It's changed names a lot over the years. It's called a, a resource, it's a resource center or a learning commons. And, and so teachers can see what's going on in that space, and that gets them comfortable with allowing students to actually go out into that space and learn on their own. You know, the idea that teachers are going to stand in front of the room and lecture, that, that's completely gone at this point. I mean, it happens a little bit throughout the day, but for the most part, students are working on projects either individually or in small groups. That is really how education is happening today. So providing those kinds of spaces is super important. But if you're going to let a student go out of the, out of the classroom to learn and to work in groups, they have to be observable. So very open, very transparent, those are really the big moves. We also bring in a safety or security consultant into our projects, and it's not just about helping us design the building, but the school district will need to come up with a, a safety and security plan. So when that school opens, we want to have a plan that tells the principal and the teachers how to do things. And so there's a lot of, a lot of energy being spent on safety and security. Miyuki, is there any, did I miss anything? Big picture.
That's not the thing. It's part of it.
So, and we can get into more detail, and if we had floor plans up, I could walk you through the things that we do, and be happy to do that. Be happy to meet with you at any point in this process. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
I have another question. So these, this list that included this federal rebate money and all these other ones for 4 million, 1 million, 1.7 million, are these guaranteed, or are, are these competitive monies that you're applying for?
None of the money there is competitive.
It's, it's something that you could, that you're guaranteed?
Right. Now, the one, the geo, so the geothermal rebate you do apply for once the building's done and you get it?
Later.
When they, when they mail you that check?
Right.
That is a new program, and the DOT reimbursement is the same way. You have to apply for that from DOT, and then they, they pay you at some point. I don't know how long that one takes to get.
Okay.
Probably six months if I had to guess.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Smith?
It's always a proud day for any manager when their commissioners ask the financial questions that, that I was going to ask, so.
[laughing]
That means everybody's, I've been speaking all these years, and somebody did pick up, uh, what's going on? I've got a sheet, it's got a lot of numbers on it, but it's, it's relevant to this, Lexington and the county, and you need to see it all on one piece of paper as we're making this decision. So I'd like to, well, and it's addressing what we just talked about. You've seen this before when we've talked about our, all of our various projects, but now you've got a little more info about these schools at the bottom. Let me start at the top. At this, at this point, we'll just call this the plan, right? This is our, this is our lives for the next several years in terms of what we're trying to do. So let's start at the top with what we've got available here. We've got $93 million in capital reserve. That's our cash, I call it cash. The next two fiscal years, we've got to stock up the 23.3 and the 18 and a half to get to that just under $135 million, because below that is all the stuff that expends all the projects. So let me skip the first line. Right now, the jail is on the, on the list, it's still the $97 million, right? We were planning on putting some cash on, and you can see the rest of it goes in the debt column. That comes out of your, you know, just annual operating budget as we get going. So if we borrow $78 million, we're back to, you know, paying an annual debt service premium on that. What I'm focused on is that county dollar cent, the second column there, the cash that we have to come up with. We've got still on the boards, you know, it's not out of our realm of possibility to join forces with SRU to expand the sewer on the west side of the county. Now you've got into the highlight, let me skip that gray highlighted areas, and then with the bottom one there, we're still working on with the county school system, the renovation of the admin building over here, right behind the sheriff's office. All right, so the gray area there is the three needs-based school projects, one for the county and one for each city. So the top line is the county. You've already saw that at the last meeting, board meeting, I said just under 10, 9.3 total. We have to come up with 1.4, the rest of it's state money, as you can see, 7.9. So we've already committed to them to file out, fill out that application and send that along. I think they're working on a second one to bring forward, I just want to give you an F, a heads up. So the other two, outside of today, let's hold where we are with this right here, just for, in a holding place, just for a second. You know, the, Thomasville's applied for this grant once before, and so has Lexington and has been denied. You know, these funds have typically gone out to the east side of the state, eastern part of the state so far. part of the state so far. But we, we've all been to the high schools and toured them. We all have toured up here. I went to visit Thomasville High School last spring, I think last winter. And so there's some issues there in the high school, particularly piping, that's going to have to be dealt with sooner or later. So, you know, at the point, back when we told them we would supply the match, it was the nine point three to get to sixty-two million. Commissioner Schell, he also asked a question that was getting ahead of the curve, but he was spot on point. Nine point three is what we agreed to, to max out that grant, right, at sixty-two million dollars. Well, as part of our capital plan, knowing that we got issues over there when we're going to give ten, I did up at some and said, "Okay, if we don't get these grants ever, ever in our lifetimes, we still have to do some things at both these high schools." We're renovating the middle school now, so you can see my plan puts in sixteen point seven million dollars in cash out of our capital plan, out of our capital reserve, to make that happen. So is everybody with me? That gets you to a hundred and thirty-five million dollars. And that's how Tim, putting up two more rounds of in-year savings, remember we've got some fluff there that we do, we have? That's what that's for. That is for this capital plan. Without that, we would not be able to fund these projects. None of these projects will be on this list unless we're going to raise taxes or, or that's it, raise taxes to fund them. So now go to the bottom side. All right, so we think, if we think we can afford, let's, let's call it that affordability of the sixteen million dollars in cash to get in our hundred and thirty-five million structure total, here's what below looks like. And I just had Tim take these numbers from this application and move them over here where we can easily see them. So the county schools is, has already been applied for, nine point three million, seven point nine from the state, one point four from us, right? So that's already in the books. Now, look, Lexington is already kind of, they'll be in front of you Monday night, but I'm just going to give you a prelude to probably what you're going to see. They have an application for a new school as well. Theirs is a lot larger dollar amount. It's a hundred and eleven million dollars. Move your eyes over from there. Sixty-two for the grant, because remember, that's all the grant will provide is sixty-two. We're on the, we're on the hook for the rest, locally. And I'll specify that with Thomasville in just a second. So you got the nine point three required match, but you have to do an additional amount to fund that hundred and eleven, which is thirty-nine point seven million dollars. Hold that there. They may be back money. And I have told them, it's the same thing, I had, kind of had a conversation with, with Dr. Williams and the school administration here, you know, we would, we would love to keep this within the sixty-two million dollar grant structure, because we were already planning for that. Does that make sense? We already thought in our minds, we committed to it one time before, so why would we not be able to do it again? That, now move your eyes down to Thomasville. So you've got all the numbers that are in this application on that one row. Eighty-six and a half million dollars, the grant sixty-two, the match is nine point three. Now, the last two columns are the key. So we'll need to get an additional six point four million dollars, and as the, as the grant application says, county be on the hook for not fifteen point seven. That's within our gray area at the top, right? Just barely, but it is. That's within what we think we can, we can do right now, estimates, right? These are all future, because twenty-twenty-five fiscal year and twenty-six ain't closed yet, but we think we can do that. It's that last piece with the rebates, the Commissioner Wallford just alluded to there. I'd like to get, make sure I got in my head kind of what we would do. It sounds like we would be on the hook to applying for those things and getting those rebates back, but I'd want a list of those from you guys to kind of go through them myself and make sure I understand what I'm applying for to get back.
Would that be deducted from the sixty-four?
It is. So if you, if you, what we would have to come up with is the fifteen point seven from us, with that eight point eight remaining to get to the total of eighty-six and a half, coming from, it sounds like a variety of places, partly from Thomasville City School Districts, from nutrition money, and then that's four of it right there, so that's almost half. And the other thing's a variety of rebates that we would apply for, it sounds like, with the state and federal government. Now, and again, I need a list of that. I want to go through that with my own eyes. I haven't had a chance to do that, and I'm going to confess that upfront. I want to know a little bit more about those rebates and how they come. You asked the question I was going to ask, which is guaranteed versus, I got to apply and being a competitive grant process. Because then if it's competitive and we don't get it, there's additional funds that have to be, have to be had, so. But you can see the cash required to run the bottom side of the page, in addition to the twenty we already kind of thought we could put up, is another forty-six million dollars. It gets us to a total of sixty-six million dollars. You know, I, we don't have that amount of cash laying around to do these things without a tax increase. So I've talked to Lexington about that same premise of trying to get this back within the sixty-two million dollars as close as possible. Or at least within our plan at the top. As you can see, we got a plan. I'm not saying this is a commitment from the commissioners, because I don't want to speak for you guys, but we think we could do the sixteen seventies. That makes sense? It's a plan. If it comes back, you know, we can't do it, I'll have to revise those numbers, but we think we can do that. So what they're asking for is fifteen seven, which is fits within that parameter right now.
So you're okay with it?
I'm okay, I'm okay with it as long as this last column checks out where I got these rebates under control and I make sure I know what I'm doing. Because I don't want to come back to you and go, "Guess what? The rebates didn't work out, and there's an additional four million dollars we've got to come up with and make it happen." This grant is on a timeline, as I understand it. So you got to file by next Friday?
Next Friday.
Next Friday. So I don't know that we got to make a decision today.
Well, I think we could go ahead and approve the, the request, application. We don't have to accept the grant if, if it's unacceptable.
That's true. That's true. It's, it's, you know, but this thing's highly competitive, you know what I mean? They're giving them out to-
Right.
And, and I'm not under the, I don't know that we'll, we'll stand a chance to pick up two high schools in the same county. I don't know. It doesn't hurt to apply.
I just don't think we need to prolong them having the ability to make an application for the grant.
Yeah.
I understand. They are, like I said, they got to have it in by next Friday, but you're, the reason why I say that is because you're going to hear from Lexington Monday night.
Right.
So maybe a decision can be had Monday night, we can have more, but I want you to have this information going into Monday night, because I don't want you, and I don't know if Dr. Hardy will be able to bring the hundred and eleven back. She may be able to, she may be able to have some conversations with her engineers and move it down. Because I, one of the questions I've got is the same question I have for you guys, and maybe you can share this now. At the sixty-two, when the first application was done last year, what's changed that added another, basically twenty-four to it? What, what got, was able to get pared down to squeeze it within sixty-two, and now it's at eighty-six and a half?
It's just inflation.
Okay.
And Johnny can speak to more if you want details on that, but- Yeah, it's just the, the cost. I'll give you an example. They had an elementary school in Greensboro, that they had a cost of about twenty-seven million dollars originally to do the project. When we finished Claxton and provided an estimate to the county for the school, the school was around forty-four million dollars because of the, the escalation in cost and time. So it, it, that's all it's a factor of. Scott's put some numbers in it that, that he doesn't know for sure, right? So like his grading numbers and some of his soil numbers, he doesn't know for certain. They're like plugs, but he has an idea based on the amount of time he's estimated K-12 schools. He knows what it may be and what it may not be. So he's got some cushion that could ultimately pull it by, but he, he's just-
What's the contingency on the project ten, fifteen?
No, no, we have a, we have a two percent contingency.
Okay.
Now, now it doesn't-
I'm sidebaring here real quick. You mentioned the funds for the CTE building. I think we, we have put some of those up early, so you're, you're foregoing that to roll, roll over into eight point eight million, right? How much is that, about a million dollars or so? Okay. So a million of that is money we've already given to them to renovate the old, if you've been over there and seen that old CTE building, that's one of the, that's one of the real problem areas on the campus in terms of HVACs and piping. It's very old and problematic. So that money, I don't blame them, if you're going to get a new school, is not going to be something that you're going to look to renovate. Now, if it's not, you don't get the grant, I think you're back, you obviously got to have a conversation of the fifteen, sixteen, or the sixteen point seven we were planning on giving them. That's one of the buildings that needs some TLC. There's a sinkhole right beside it, so the, the, as I understand it, the heating and air gets piped in boiler-wise from another building, which is on the other side of campus. So that's antiquated and old way of doing things, obviously. So, anyway, that, there's part of the funds you've already given them built into that one, at eight point eight. So if you were, if you're, I'm doing the math here, if you give them fifteen point seven, and they, they chipping in with four for nutrition, that leaves about four and a half million dollars. Well, one and a half of it's something we've already given. Does that make sense? So you take that right off the list, now we're down to three and a half in terms of rebates that we got to go chase down. It's not the worst scenario in the world. Does that make, the one point mi, one point one million for the old CT is not going anywhere, because you've already given it to them.
So are you okay with him going ahead with the-
I, I, I want to look, I want to spend a little bit of time between now and Monday night if I can, Commissioner Schell, just checking out this rebate issue, so I'm ready for Monday night's conversation with Dr. Hardy, and that may come up then. She may have some rebates as well, issues that I can talk to her about between now and then, because I'm interested in how she's going to scope down, because hers is obviously a bigger number. I mean, I don't have an extra thirty-nine point seven million dollars in cash laying around. We're going to have to trim that down somehow and have, and that's why I asked him that question, what changed from scoping it to sixty-two to get eighty-six? Was there, was there something added? Was there a athletic complex or something to that nature added?
Casey, can we put it on consent for Monday night? That way we can-
She's coming to talk for the deliberation. If we, if you want to have that conversation, and somehow we'll work a motion, I'll figure it out, we'll work a motion to essentially, essentially if it's okay, amenable to the board to approve them, to go forward, the two of them, then we will.
Because there aren't many times, they need to get this thing done.
Right. Because they're both going to have to apply by next Friday. They both got to meet the same timeline. But we need just a little bit, I need a few more moments if I can. Indulge me on that final column.
So we're going to hold this off till Monday night?
Just hold off, if you can, please.
Is that okay with, with you, Dr. Williams?
It is, it is. And, and it's just good to know that we're in that ballpark, that gray ballpark that you have.
Just from my knowledge, you all have got a new spot, or you going to, are y'all looking at where the old high school is now?
Yeah, so it's been laying behind the current high school. Okay, we don't have to, you know, tear down, you know, we'll have, we'll still have space for our students to be in that existing building.
It's not a total demolition, in other words. You're not going to totally demo-
A portion of the-
A portion of the existing school will be in demo. That's what you saw in the demo number.
Yeah.
There's a site plan that's been provided within the application where it shows what buildings are going to be, remain. Some of those will possibly be reused for other things, but the primary, the school itself, kind of that contained program where everything is inside one building, is going to be that main, that larger building, obviously, on the site that is placed behind. So again, as, as Dr. Williams said, the beauty of it is that the, the existing school can continue to function as is during the entire construction process, so that way there's no disruption to the learning environment during, during school.
That's the improved safety feature there as well.
And Commissioner Schell, the original packet was very large, so we will, we'll attach it to the item for Monday. That way you can go in and look at everything.
So that will have the, the basic plan.
It will have all of the background information.
That's what I'd like to see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was just a lot to print for y'all today.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Are you the new school superintendent?
I am.
You are? Okay, I hadn't had a chance to meet you.
No.
Nice to meet you, sir.
All right. So are we ready? We're good with that then?
Yeah. I think so.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Seven C, emergency communications, night shift differential proposal. Mr. Smith?
Catch, Dr. Williams. Nicole was here, Rabello from 911. She wants to talk to you guys about night shift and some issues we've got going on, and I'll come back and I'll help her as we get going on.
All right. Take us out, Nicole.
All right. So Nicole Rabello at the 911 Center. I'm the operations manager. I've been in this position now for two years. I'm very excited to speak to you today, I think I just turned this off, today, about something very close to my heart, which is going to be a night shift differential. Very near and dear. I have a couple of night shifters that have joined me today and a couple of day shifters that are here to, to say hello to you this morning. As soon as the slideshow comes up, I'll get started. You do have a paper copy on your desk as well. Okay, so, here we go. Of course, you're going to look at first health risk of night shift work in general. This is not specific to 911. This is just from the CDC website of what you're looking at for a night shifter when you ask them to work a shift overnight. Of course, that first category, physical health, that's very obvious. There's some physical changes that happen whenever people work a night shift rotation. Number two, mental health, safety concerns and personal life. The two that I want to draw really good attention to is that mental health bullet and the personal life bullet. That's because on night shift, you tend to have an increased risk of those mood changes and a huge one is sleep deprivation. Anybody that's worked night shift, you know you got to sleep during the day, you got to get up, work all night, and try to go back to sleep when you're supposed to be awake doing normal things. So that is a, a huge issue that we see with just night shift in general, is them trying to operate a normal life under that sleep deprivation issue. It's an increased risk of psychological disorders. You know, mental health is something we talk about a lot now in public safety. A lot of attention is drawn to it. But that personal life bullet is the second point that is really big for whenever you ask someone to work night shift. You're asking that person to work while their family is sleeping and come back home when that family is going to school or they're going to work, and you kind of are on this offset schedule where you're putting more stress on that family life. So that's specific to night shift in general. Everyone loves a good data slide, so I threw in this from Executime. I pulled it yesterday. So this is the 2023 fiscal year absenteeism that we had at the 911 Center. So day shift in that first category, you'll see that absences were around nine hundred and thirty-six hours for the year. Employees were called in for thirteen thirty-seven hours. That's a high number, right? That's, that's a significant amount of absences. When you flip over to the night shift side, you nearly double some of those times. So absences on night shift, you're looking at twelve twenty-four, so one thousand two hundred and twenty-four hours of absenteeism, approximately twenty-four more shifts a year. So that's almost with how our two-two-three schedule is, that's almost two months' worth of shifts that were down an employee due to a call-off or an absent, absenteeism. Employees were called in to work on night shift, two thousand five hundred and forty-one hours. That's double, almost double what day shift is called in on. And that's not just a call-off for an employee that didn't come to work, that's an open shift where the, the shift had five people and they need six, because our minimum is six. So night shift just historically is harder to staff. You've, you've got those, on that slide before, those challenges that some employees just don't feel like they can, they can swap over to without some type of incentive. I don't know what I did. I'll keep on rolling there.
No, no, that's just a blank slide.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so benefits. What we're looking at for some benefits of what a night shift differential would offer those employees on night shift for 911, you're looking at that recognition that you're saying, "Hey, I see you. I see that you're taking the time away from your family. I see what you're doing, and we appreciate you," and it's that offering of, of that recognition to that night shift employee. Financial security, you can't not look at the financial side. When you're offering a, offering some type of night shift differential, it does have that financial benefit to that employee. So that employee would be able to bring home more to their family. Experience for night shift, that's drawing attention to the fact that historically, the ones with experience will request to move to day shift. They've got that seniority, they want to have a normal life, so they will request to move off of night shift. This would hopefully give that incentive for them to want to stay on night shift or move to night shift in general. Um, higher job satisfaction, there's, you know, just different changes on night shift. You're dealing with, with different calls, how you process things at night versus during the day. During the day, you can transfer callers to the civil department. You can transfer them to DSS. You can transfer them to different agencies that are awake and alive, Monday through Friday, eight to five. On night shift, you're not going to have access to those same exact transfers. So they're handling those calls in the nine one one center. Um, also on the previous slide, when we talked about those 2,000 hours of on-call, the employee on night shift is essentially working almost double what the employee on day shift is. So they're kind of handling that same amount of workload that day shift is just by nature. Um, you're looking at additional DCI work when LEO departments don't have someone at their desk office overnight to do their work. And just lack of administration helps. So if something hits in the middle of the day, I can throw a headset on. Three others of us can throw a headset on and run into the room. So they have four additional hands at the ready that can help them on the day shift. On night shift, you don't. I mean, they can call me. I can say, okay, well, I'm coming from Denton and I will be 25 minutes away to get in there and try to help them. But on day shift, they have more access to that availability. Um, here are some surrounding counties around us that are doing night shift differential. Rob was very nice enough to help me out with this. He cert, he researched and got the surrounding counties around us, the nine one one centers, of what they're doing for night shift currently. So you'll notice that some of those are bolded. Um, the ones that are bolded are going to be agencies where we have a TC that left our county and did go to those counties. So for Davie County, we had one TC, Forsyth County, two, Guilford Metro, one, Rowan County, four, and Randolph County, one TC. So that's just examples. It varies widely. As you can tell, there's no set. It's not, you don't go to this one agency and it's always going to be $2 an hour. You know, it's, it varies widely. Our proposal. So my proposal today would be $2 per hour night shift differential for the night shift employees. The funding of it would be paid out of lapse salaries at the nine one one center, so no additional cost to the county. Um, the also caveat to that is if the lapse salaries wouldn't cover it, we would look for PBB fund for our department. Uh, justification, of course, we've already talked about that and to improve retention and the amount of call offs on night shift. Cost breakdown, I'll fly through this one. This has got some of your highest examples of the employees that worked last year. Um, the highest amount that one employee worked was 2,984 hours. Of course, normal is 2080 hours. That's on Monday through Friday, eight to five typical schedule. So this employee worked nearly 900 more, or 900 more hours for the year. Um, so that's the highest level. That's not normal. This employee picked up a whole bunch of overtime, um, at their request and, and to fill in some night shift stuff. So your lowest is, is down there, employee number six, around 41 for the year. Uh, Tim helped us out and got us some good cost numbers. The total differential cost would be 55,000 when you're looking at the annual differential plus their overtime, plus FICA and all those other numbers. It's, it's really going to sit at 75, 75,500. Alternative cost scenario is $1.75 an hour. The total annual cost for that would be 66,000. A $1.50 an hour would be 56,000. And of course, we're requesting the $2 an hour to be competitive with some of those counties that sit right beside of us. Uh, year to year lapse salaries. So one full-time telecommunicator, three approximately is $66,000 a year. So in fiscal year 2022, we averaged 1.75 open telecommunicator positions. That kind of fluctuates. One quarter we'll have two open position, the next quarter no open position, the next quarter one open position. So it fluctuates throughout the year. So for the entire year, you're looking at approximately 115,000 is what we would have looked at for lapse salary in that year. Um, 2023, this past year, we're averaging about 1.25. So 82,000 was kind of a ballpark number of what we could look at. Currently, we're sitting at two open telecommunicator, telecommunicator positions. But that's it that I have for you. I'm very up in with Rob to assist me to answer any questions that you may have.
What is the hour, hourly, what will the hourly wage be for an average hourly worker with this increase?
Yes, so, um, all of them vary. There's TC one, two, and three, and then you have supervisors. So our current bring in for a telecommunicator one, I believe is spending 18, $18 an hour. So whenever you look at putting them on night shift, they would be looking at $20 an hour. And it would, it wouldn't be, we've talked with Angie about some different ways to, to work that because you have some employees that work a noon to midnight schedule. You have some day shifters that will volunteer to cover night shift because we need help on night shift. So it, we've been in contact with Angie on how to get that worked out.
So it's, so the start is 18 to, moving 18 to 20 and then two, three, and the supervisor goes up from there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Mr. Shale?
Are, are the ones working night shift, are they there by choice or is that just their sound?
A few are there by choice. I have a few that love night shift. That's their, that's their deal. They want to be there forever. They'll never come off. Um, and then you do have a few that they're there because they don't have the seniority to request to get an open day shift spot if it does come open. Someone with more seniority will request to move over there. Uh, recently, we implemented a supervisor rotation so we could get some num, some years' experience on night shift. Um, Donnie's our recent guinea pig with that. Him and Holly, she's got 28 years' experience. So we've shifted them to night shift to get some experience on night shift. But you'll, you're looking at it averages, a telecommunicator under two years is usually the one that ends up on night shift.
I have another one.
Hmm?
How many employees?
So it usually night shift staff's pool is going to be 12. So six on one rotation, six on the other rotation. And then we try to do one noon to midnight on each rotation. Right now, we just got one noon to midnight on one.
Can I, which, which shift has the most, highest volume of calls?
Day shift has the highest volume of calls. That's, that's by nature. Everybody's awake, they're moving. Uh, we average 250 to 300 calls a year, so day shift is going to handle a big chunk of that. I believe night shift is averaging about 80 to 90,000 dol, uh, 90, $90,000, I'm sorry, 80 to 90,000 calls a year. So they're about half of day shift, but whenever we looked at that number of how many employees are being called in. While, yeah, that's, that number is big on day shift, you're still got the same amount of workload being put on the same amount of TCs on night shift. Being told to, you gotta work extra shifts and cover this open time. So it kind of, you know, it kind of evens out. You're still putting a lot more on that one TC to cover four or five extra shifts a month. So that they can, we can be staff fully on night shift.
Anything?
No, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the proactiveness of this. Um, and it's in line, the $2 an hour is in line with Forsyth County to our north. It's in line with Iredale County, which is very similar to our county. Um, but I don't have any questions. Very straightforward to me.
I'll say, I know that it's, it's only been about three or four years ago that I was involved in a, in a study where, uh, the FBI actually did it. And people work in night shift. Uh, I can't remember the name that's about that long. But anyway, it, it messes, it really messes you up as far as the way, uh, your body reacts to things and so on and so forth. So, so there is a, there is a justification as far as people constantly working nighttime and so on and so forth. So Casey, what, you got anything to add to this?
No, um, I think Nicole did a good job. I mean, I, you know, remember a couple of years ago, we had, um, let's just say we had some staffing issues in this, in this service. And I say a couple of years ago, that's been a few, maybe pushing three and four. We're okay now. Uh, you get the shift reports pretty much every week and you see, you know, we've had, had seven, eight, nine per shift, counting the part timers. Um, I don't want to get back to the, we're bringing this to you, uh, somebody mentioned the phrase preemptively. We don't want to get back to four on a shift. And so, uh, night shift, as you mentioned, it is something that's probably a little different. I, even though, you know, Outland's crew doesn't run as many calls at night, but, um, a little bit different type of service in EMS. You know, in the sense of you're in the base, you're waiting on the call to come. The TC can't leave that station. You know, they're, they're there. There are no, there's no sitting there getting, you know, maybe wandering off to get a meal and get a rest or something. The calls come in, you don't know when they're coming, so. Um, and then we've done salary adjustments in EMS and, uh, say Sheriff's Department, who also works night shifts. And some of, uh, some atrocious folks, social workers work night shifts. We, this is not a salary adjustment. This is just a differential for that crew, which I kind of, kind of like that as a baby step, if that makes sense, to see how this works.
Anybody else got anything? So Casey, you don't need, all you want us to do is put this on the September ninth agenda?
If we could, please.
Only like on deliberation or you just want it?
If consent, if it's formidable to the board.
Consent, yep. Everybody good with that?
We've got a way to pay for it. Well, I think we can generate enough lapse salaries to cover it for this first go around and see how it goes for this year and make sure we keep it stacked.
We're good with that. Good job, Nicole.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Item D, EMS request to reclass four paramedic positions to paramedic FTOs. Mr. Haynes.
You're almost there, aren't you?
Almost persuaded. You've heard that song? Almost persuaded.
Morning, Commissioners.
I continue this morning to ask to add four more FTO positions.
Currently, we have three on each shift, which gives us a total of 12, and then it will expand that to 16. Um, we, you know, we have fixed a lot of our, um, vacancy deficits, but we still have folks coming and going that needs to be trained all the time. New employees need to be brought up to speed. Uh, you know, on the rare occasions, we may have a provider that needs a little bit of remediation. And, and those FTOs are tied up with them. And they also provide help to do QA and QI as well. Our call volume is, is on track right now to increase from maybe 30 to almost 40,000 calls this year in one year. That's a significant change. We have a QA, QI individual, but the FTOs also help with that just because the sheer amount of calls we have. So that'll help with that as well. Uh, as far as the cost of that, it's generally a 5% promotional raise that these individuals get. So with four individuals, we're talking less than $10,000 a year annually. And we can probably make that up, I'm sure, in lapse salaries. Casey, you got anything you want to add?
No, I mean, he hit the nail on his. Training, I mean, with enough transient folks, I want to make sure the training is as proper as it can be. Uh, we need FTOs a little bit more. We need, we, these are paramedics. Don't get me wrong, right? They serve both functions, but we need more training. So instead of adding four training officers when we've got vacancies that come and go, it makes more sense to just take four paramedics and make them training officers. They can serve both.
Um, that's not, just one question as far as that goes, by taking these positions, um, and changing it out, we're not shortchanging you at some point?
No, I, I don't think so at all because they, like I said, they still serve as a paramedic on a daily basis. We're just going to reclassify four paramedic positions to four more additional FTO positions. It's going to be a great benefit for us to do that.
Uh, anybody got anything? Mr. Shale?
Okay.
Consent or, uh, consensus to move this to consent?
Yes.
All right, good job.
Good job.
All right. Item E, uh, discuss on, uh, discussion on animal shelter adoption fees. Mr. Martin will lead this off.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners. You all probably recall last year, we, um, for the first time, did a waiver of the adoption fees at the animal shelter around this time. It's kind of the end of the summer. And we ended up extending that through the end of the calendar year. Donna has reached out to me and has expressed interest in doing that again this year. Uh, last year, we did it with a donation of like a bag of food, uh, something like that, a small donation. Um, and we'd like to do something similar again this year through the end of the year.
Was it fruitful last year?
It was. Um, and, and it shows in the reports that, that they send, uh, you know, every month we get the, the statistics. I was looking at that and I mean, adoptions went up through, especially in December, of course. Uh, they, they normally go up in December anyway, but they did go up, um, over the previous years. And so I think it was fruitful last year. Uh, and then there was a pretty hard drop off in January and it's kind of stayed flat, like around nine, 10% all year. Um, so this would help with getting some animals out. And, uh, I know they're looking at trying to get more of this out on the web and all that as well, uh, for people. Uh, the only change that they wanted to make to it was to not limit it to food, but maybe donation of a toy, something like that, you know? Um, those kinds of things because they've got a lot of food that gets donated there anyway. But, um, it, it was, um, I, I felt like successful last year. And to go ahead and just kind of run it through the end of the calendar year this year.
Any questions? Everybody good with that? Putting this on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
All right. Good job. Uh, discussion regarding Davidson County schools. Um, I will lead this off. Uh, Dr. Slate, you want to come up? Appreciate you being here today.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Just for those who, who don't know me, my name's Bradley Hunt. I'm one of the attorneys at Brinkley-Walser Stoner, uh, that serve as general counsel, outside counsel for the Davidson County schools. So I'm here to address this issue as well, but please lead it off.
Fantastic. Glad, glad you're here. Good to have you, good to have you with us.
Thank you.
Um, so it was, some things were sent to me, uh, and I know they've been shared with you. And ultimately, um, the question was, is, is why some of these things, uh, I guess needed an attorney's attention, uh, is the, is the big thing. Um, in lieu of, and, and I don't know, I'm, I'm jumping ahead here, Dr. Slate, and, uh, but I know we're part of the school of government. And are you a contract attorney, sir, or?
Correct. I'm in my, in a private practice. I'm not an employee of the school system. We have a memorandum of agreement.
And that's what we all thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Correct.
Um, so it's not like us being able to run to Adam and ask him a question. Uh, you are a private.
Correct. I handle, right. I handle other clients other than school systems.
That's correct. That's correct. Um, so with the school of government, Dr. Slate, uh, you know, we have the ability to pick the phone up sometimes and ask those questions and whatnot. They don't charge us. Do you guys ever do that or i- is that in your purview or is it ever been handled that way or, or anything like that? Just, I know, I know money is always what it ultimately comes down to. And to me, that's what, to me, this is a lot, uh, is about, is, is, is money wise and making sure that, that the money is properly spent. Uh, and that, that is, uh, that's what I'm doing here today is just being completely and totally transparent, making sure that the money is spent. Um, that's why I asked you if you're a contract attorney.
That's correct.
Um, but there's been items, uh, that were, I believe the word was, uh, research.
Right, so I, I, coming into this meeting, it was my understanding there was an issue about a time entry about researching the ability of a minor to obtain an abortion. And if we want to discuss that, I'm here and prepared to do so. That's why that was researched.
Uh, and I understand. I, I really wasn't trying to get into all that because I didn't want to dig up all that stuff. But, um, but yes, that is one of the issues, uh, was that minor and, and why the school system needs to do that.
Well, I would, if I may, address that.
Absolutely, please.
So, a- and that is a time entry that I created that was prior to Dr. Slate being superintendent. Um, and I'll actually start the explanation with a question, which is a terrible thing to do.
Sure.
Um, are we all aware that there is a North Carolina general statute in a corresponding AOC form that allows a minor to petition the court for permission to have an abortion without parental consent? I don't know if anybody is aware of that sitting here.
I am aware of it now only because of, of this and, and such.
Correct. So that is the very issue.
Okay.
In that a student approaches a teacher that she has a good relationship with and confides in that teacher that she is pregnant and her and her boyfriend have already arranged to have an abortion. And that she doesn't want to tell her parents. So those who have been teachers, what would you have done? Would you have known what to do, to do?
No, no.
Yes, so there's, there is exactly the case. So eventually that issue makes its way to the appropriate central office employee.
Correct.
Who then calls me. And I did not even know that such an option existed. It's just not an area that I necessarily practice in. So upon researching, I discover that that is allowable, that a minor can petition a district court judge for permission to have an abortion without parental consent. And I was able to find the AOC form in multiple places. It is marked confidential, confidential, confidential. It's basically treated like a juvenile matter.
Absolutely.
Highly confidential. If I wanted to see the file, which I don't, I couldn't. And so based on that, um, I reported back to that central office employee that it was allowable. Um, and, and between me researching and me finding out that that was an allowable process, I think central office employee with assistance of teacher had confirmed that they, that that minor child had gone through those steps already. And so ultimately, where I left it with central office employee was train has pretty much left the station here. But I would advise you to advise our teacher and/or guidance counselor to sit down with said young student and attempt to impress upon them the importance of this decision that, you know, traditionally is not made by a minor. And that to highly encourage them to, um, involve their parents or an adult in this decision. And that is the extent of that entry.
Okay. There was one other one, and if you don't mind, since we seem to be on a roll.
Since, since we're here.
Since we're here and on a roll.
While you're up, yes.
Um, I'm just going to ask you a very direct question. Have, at any point in time, uh, is, uh, have you assisted in any, in a, in a legal separation of any employee?
Absolutely not. And I'll even give you some additional information on that.
That's up to you.
Brad, Bradley Hunt learned just enough about family law to pass the bar.
Okay.
Bradley Hunt does not practice in family law.
Okay.
I don't handle divorces. I don't handle separations. But, you know, my only future experience might be when my wife is fed up with me, but I do not handle any.
I've told mine, I'm running right behind her, so she can't, she ain't going far.
So, no, sir, I do not and have not and will not.
Dr. Slate, um, there's questions come to us all the time in, in, in emails. There's questions that we don't want to get in the middle of. There's questions that we don't want to deal with. This is one of them, okay? But I feel it's my duty to the citizens that I was elected to answer that question, okay? Um, but when these things come, Casey or his staff jumps on them immediately. And ultimately, I don't think any of this should have ever had to come to the Commissioners. Uh, and I've said this on numerous occasions. I would ask, me personally, as a Commissioner, as a taxpayer in this county. I know there's questions that, that you get asked. I know that you don't want to answer them. I know that you don't want to be in the middle of them. And this is not a chastising, sir. This is me and you talking, okay? Um, just somebody answer these questions, please, so they'll stop coming here. Because if they don't get an answer, and citizens deserve an answer, um, they do. Whether I want to give it to them or not, I'm responsible to these citizens. And please, either yourself or somebody, answer some of these questions because it's going to wind up here and there's no need in it being here.
Commissioner Shores, just real quick and briefly, um, we have an executive director of communications. And if said commun, if said questions go to our executive director of communications, Mr. Abbott at Broadway, she'll answer them. Typically, what we get is public records requests, not questions. Just putting out public records requests, we fulfill those. If there's a question involving said public records request, we'll answer them. Now, if the answer's not what people want to hear, I can't help if they misconstrue it. What I can tell them is here's the answer. What my staff will do, here is the answer. And that's what we do. Um, whether you like it or not, the answer is the answer. We're going to be very fact-based. We're going to keep it very simple. Uh, we're going to be very fact-based. We're going to keep it very simple. Um, and that's what we do. Um, and if they don't like the answer in these particular situations, there weren't questions directed here. There was a public records request that in turn was brought to you with the question, not to us. When it got to us, we answered it. We released a public statement and answered an email via email regarding the previous question that you had about separation. We answered. We didn't get a question about, um, the student issue that was the first one that you brought to us. No question there. Never got it. We would have answered it. We would have said exactly what Mr. Hunt said.
Um, during, I, I, I'm pretty sure they, that you ha- you do, during your, uh, Board of Education meetings, you have a public comment section.
Correct.
Just as we do. And many times, even though we don't typically engage in that, but many times when a question is asked, we'll ask Casey or one of our staff members to address that.
Correct.
Uh, you know, in another way. A- and I, and I, I'm sure you probably have. I don't know if you have or not, but I'm sure you've probably handled it the same way as well.
Exactly.
Um, that, that's all. I, again, this ain't, this is not by any means a, a, an attempt to, um, berate you all or, or call you on the carpet. It's just, I was, I've been asked, several citizens have asked a question, and we don't have any other way to handle this but to handle it. So,
Sure, sure.
We appreciate you all being here. Um, I hope that we can get a working relationship going forward. I know you're new and, and learning, just like we all knew and learned. Uh, and I appreciate the, the candor of you being here. Um, but does any other Commissioner have anything?
I'd like to make a-
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Shores. Um, what I'd like to say is that, and, and some of this is philosophy, and, and it's, some of it's personal, and then some of it has to do with being a county commissioner. So, what I'd like to say is that, um, we live in a world of doubt and misinformation and, um, encouragement to sometimes, um, ask things, um, that we're frustrated about, um, and that sort of thing. But I just want to make sure that you understand that I, as a Commissioner, and I'm hoping that my colleagues do as well, realize the importance of the Board of Education and their difficult job that they do. I had a friend, a very close friend, who served at, on the Board of, of Education years ago, and, uh, was quite close to her. She didn't reveal any personal information. She just told me how hard it was. And the way the world is in today, I believe that it's even more so. So, we're constantly asking, a- as you are, we're asking our lawyer, you're asking yours as well, so that you can do the right thing. You can say the right thing. Um, and, and I, the final thing that I'd like to say is that, and I appreciate you as well, and both of you, um, is that we Commissioners, and I know where my lane is, uh, in purview, and I realize that the Board of Election has their lane and their responsibilities, and I never want to cross that line.
No, education, Board of Education.
You said Board of Elections.
Yes, Board of Education. I never want, I never want to cross that line.
Right.
Um, and I want you to understand that that, you, you will always see that, uh, with me, and I hope so with, with my-
Thank you.
My colleagues.
Thanks for that comment.
Thank you. I, I would have preferred not to have, to bring someone's dirty laundry, or if it is dirty, or anything, um, that, that deals with young people, because we as teachers know what, what it, what's out there as well. So, thank you.
Absolutely. We understand there's ci- there's HIPAA, there's sensitive information.
FERPA for us, really.
FERPA for you, HIPAA. Um, uh, we understand all that. I just, you know,
I think it's-
I agree with my colleague completely. Uh, I do have one other question, and that is, you as the, as the, uh, school superintendent and your office have the ability to, to, um, request the attorney to, to do things, the same as Casey or, or any of his staff has the ability to, to request. Uh, and this request came from your administrative, administration versus the Board of, uh, I almost said it too, as the Board of Education.
Right. That's correct. Came from administrative staff and central office cabinet or someone directly under a cabinet member.
If you don't like it, change it. How do you do that? You vote. People ask me that all the time. Fire them.
Power of the ballot box.
If I'm not doing my job, fire me. You know, I go fishing in the emerald. That's not a bad, that life is.
Gentlemen, I appreciate you being here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Casey, have you got anything at all?
No, sir. I appreciate you two gentlemen coming by.
Right.
Actually, wasn't anticipating you sharing as much as you have, so I appreciate your time as well.
Well, I mean, it, it is a little bit sensitive. I've thought about it, but it, it's not actually confidential. It wasn't e- educational record. It was legal advice, really, that I was-
I was glad you did.
At the end of the day, really given to an employee.
Yeah, I, I had no intention of bringing that out, but-
Sure, sure, sure. No, no, no. I mean, I wanted-
I don't play lawyer, 'cause that gets me so-
No, well, I mean, I don't, I, I mean, I, I welcome challenges on what I'll do, what I do for the school system. Um, and I'll share it. I mean, if, and in the future, there may be times where you may ask me questions, and I may say, I'm not telling you that.
And I understand that.
Because I can't. It's confidential. So, if I can, I can. If I cannot, I will not. So.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you being here.
And nice to meet you two. I know I've talked to Mr. Smith on the phone and never really seen you in person and haven't met Attorney Jones yet.
Thanks for having me here.
But glad to have you. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Item G, completing, complete access to broadband funding opportunity. Mr. Manus will lead this off.
So, we will be asking for you all to vote on this today, if you don't mind, due to the time-sensitive nature. The, uh, North Carolina Department of Information Technology reached out to us just, uh, on the third, and then gave us a little more information, um, just yesterday. So, basically, there's two programs, um, that can, one, one is all about building infrastructure for broadband. It's called Completing Access to Broadband. And that program ordinarily requires a thirty-five percent match of the county. The second program is called, um, Stopgap, actually is provided by North Carolina Department of Information Technology. They can pay that match. So, there's an opportunity for a total of approximately plus or minus one-point-four million dollars to come to the county. It won't come directly through, it won't be passed through to us. It'll be at the state level, and that match would be satisfied through the Stopgap. So, what we're asking for, I know you have a packet before you, but if you flip the pages fifteen and sixteen, that's all I had to give you. There's a lot of guidance in there, and there's a lot of information. But really, we're looking on page fifteen. If you want to pursue the funds or request funding, we would like authorization for that. There's an optional section. I would recommend, you know, with zero, um, as far as additional amount the county would pay. We're just looking for the match money, or five-hundred thousand dollars. The second page, page sixteen, is if, if you all decide you would want staff to serve and work with, uh, the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, uh, as they look through these scopes of work, and just to see what types of projects we'll have in the county, um, you know, you may want to assign, um, a couple of county staff. The NCDIT likes to have county, county management on board, however anyone could do it. Um, for example, IT director, um, you could have economic development folks. I would be willing to serve as one of those members just to help. But that's what I'm looking for today is, one, do we want to pursue funding? If so, let us know so we can complete, and off, let us complete this form, if you would authorize us to complete page fifteen. Two is, if you have any team members you want us to, you know, that will work directly with DIT. And of course, we would always report back to y'all with, um, information regarding this, these projects.
This is part of that effort. Remember the broadband grants that came through that we got, that we did have to put up a little bit of our-
The great grant.
ARAP money together. I think it was like ten thousand dollars to get several million, um, to get to this, uh, under, underserved areas of the counties.
Unserved and underserved.
Or unserved period. Um, this is part of that effort here. So, they're asking, they essentially sent this to us and said, look, there's essentially a million and a half dollars you want in on it. And oh, by the way, there's another program that'll help cover the match. So, I saw it as kind of, so you're asking us for nothing, basically. Uh, that sounds like a winner to me for trying to get it.
Yeah.
Motion?
Motion. Uh, I'm making motion that we approve the application on page fifteen to be filled out. And on page sixteen, with regard to the members, we'll let Casey, Tim and them get together and pick two they want in there.
Fair enough.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All, uh, vote on your iPads.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go.
Wait, I'm sorry.
We need to redo it?
Please, I had it on the wrong item.
Don't tell me I was faster than you.
You were faster than-
Make sure you put your motion and your second in.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I made the motion.
That you hit him, Debbie.
He can't even see.
I don't have yours yet.
You don't have mine?
No.
You're too busy telling everybody else what they-
I've hit the button three times, Steve.
It, it came. All the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of four.
Motion's adjourned, Mr. Vice Chair. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Any opposed? Stay here.